Here ye, here ye, here we are again. Seems like we were just here last week. Oh, that's right, we were. All right, for the camera and for recording purposes, this is the regular city council meeting of the City of Tegukay Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. Will you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. All right, let me get my computer ready here and we're gonna get started. Welcome, everybody. We've got a lot of firemen and a lot of other faces I haven't seen before. Go ahead, Heather.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would like to table, under item six, under new business, item B, amendment to the license agreement with Shore Club on the Green LLC, until we can have further discussion on the matter.
I have a motion to table item number six B.
Second.
Call in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, let's start with item number one. We have a present, special presentation, the recognition of Fort Mill Elks on beacon grant for water rescue craft. Chief?
Mayor, council, how are you? Good evening. So I just wanted to back up a little bit and share some information. So the Fort Mill Elks have been a great advocate for us for some time. About a year and a half ago, we presented an idea to them to do a smoke detector blitz in the community. And they accepted that and actually offered to give us manpower as well as smoke alarms, donation for smoke alarms. Well, COVID hit and it derailed the whole program. So it's put it on pause for now. But they came to us and said, we have an opportunity for a grant for you. And this is Sal, he is the exalted leader of the Fort Mill Elks, chapter that meets here. And we wanted to come tonight and just recognize them. They gave us a grant for $3,500. The $3,500 grant is actually for the float boat that goes behind the jet skis so we can affect water rescues in the city. So we want to, tonight, I wanted to bring them to you guys and just to recognize them. So I've got a certificate for them. It says, "The TTK Fire Department recognizes this commitment of the Fort Mill Elks Lodge, 2859, for the generous contribution to the TTK Fire Department for the lifesaving equipment through the beacon grant." So Sal, I appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Sal.
Thank you for the grant.
Thank you.
And we appreciate everything you do for us.
Want to say something? We appreciate that.
No problem. It's our honor. We've been involved in Fort Mill, TTK, now for about 14 years. It's very proud that we have an opportunity to work more closely with Tegukay. So it's just our pleasure to be here and the least we can do. We love giving back to the community and we look forward to years of continued cooperation between Fort Mill Elks and Tegukay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So it looks like the sleds, like on Baywatch?
It's similar. It's about, it's a five-person float boat, basically.
I'm just having fun.
It's not quite like that.
Aren't y'all gonna take an official picture or anything for our, there's Joseph around? Okay, he's already got it? Okay, you're already good. Thank you. I would give you a fist bump. We'll do a virtual fist bump. How's that? Yes, sir. Okay, item number two, public comments. I don't see any public comments. That's a first. Did anybody walk in late that didn't get to sign up that wants to make a public comment?
Or did we start early?
No, we started one minute late. Anybody want to say anything? Going once, going twice? All right, item number three. Man, this is rolling right along. Approval of minutes. Council, you were given the minutes via emails. Are any additions, deletions, or changes? Going once, going twice. They stand as published. Item number three, item number four is the committee reports. Economic Development Commission, sir?
Excuse me, we met, the Economic Development Commission met on January 21st, did have a quorum, decided to try something new this time. They're going to invite a local business to just come speak for a few minutes about their business and what they do at each one. At this particular meeting, the Baxter vet came to speak with us. It's kind of interesting to hear her take on what was going on and why they moved. They'd been looking for a little while to move and settle on the TTK site. And I think, Charlie, you might be elaborate, they owned it for about three years before they built on it. Is that right?
Yes, sir, about three or four years before they finally built.
They grew from 3,700 square feet to 10,000 square feet. Business has been growing ever since they moved there. They feel like the location is a big part of it. They're up to six vets now, so, you know, quite large. Everything else was just kind of common things. I don't, I guess we didn't realize, they let us know that pets can get COVID as well, but usually don't have symptoms. That was just kind of interesting. But it was, it was nice to hear that they were very pleased with the investment that they had put into our community and our community was, you know, paying them back by taking their animals there. We talked about business licenses and we also discussed the council work plan as it applies to the EDC and scheduled next meeting.
Any questions of the economic development? All right, let's go to Planning Commission. Ma'am, you're up.
Hey, thanks. So Planning Commission met and got updates from the different liaison activities with Fort Mill School District, Fort Mill, York County Planning Commissions. And our chairman, Leonard, has joined the Bike Ped Coalition of York County to represent us there. And we also had this past month, in addition to, I guess, collaboration with Fort Mill and EDC, so continuing education with Fort Mill on RFATs and traffic impact analysis process, which is really good and seemed to be well attended. In terms of our topics, they discussed reprioritizing the work plan based on council's conversation about their work plan and priority items. First priority for them is the small area plans for the new mixed-use districts. Second is the discussion on stormwater runoff and future potential approaches to better regulate or control impacts. And then third is establishing a priority list of bike and pedestrian projects for council to consider. There was a lot of conversation around both the stormwater item and the bike and ped. A few recommendations that they were tossing around for the stormwater will be vetted through the Planning Commission and then brought forth to city council to consider an amendment to our ordinance. And then, in terms of the bike and ped projects, one of the things that we talked about is doing some research in terms of how do other cities or municipalities evaluate their sidewalk, their sidewalks, and scale them. Is it based on length? Is it based on traffic count? What are those things? And what makes sense for our city? And how can we take those things and apply them, you know, to develop a certain level of criteria so that we can evaluate our sidewalks on a more metric-based system? Of course, those will then be evaluated, proposed to us, so that we can, so that we can use that as a tool to help us prioritize what we should be funding or focusing on in the future years. So I really look forward to that. I think it will help us a lot. And lastly, I'll just say, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 1st at 6:30, right here in this room, if anyone would like to join us.
Are there any questions of the Planning Commission? See none, let's move on to, we're moving right along tonight. Item number five A, this is the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 42, Article One, Sections 42-24 and 42-26 of the Code and Ordinances of the Code of Ordinances for the City of TTK and as it relates to recycled waste. As was discussed during the December and January council meeting, the city continues to have an issue with recycle contamination. The proposed ordinance amendment allows for the city to remove recycling carts and discontinue the service for those who repeatedly put non-recyclable materials in the recycle carts. City staff worked with council member Overman to develop parameters surrounding the education of the public, warnings for offenders, and the removal of the recycle cart. Once the cart is removed, those residents will be allowed to receive their recycle, will be allowed to receive their recycle cart and reenter the recycle program for a period of six months and once signing a pledge to recycle properly. Okay? Are there any questions or comments? Heather?
No.
No? Okay.
I'll just ask, has anyone received any input or feedback on this proposal? I haven't heard anything.
Just that everybody thinks how simple this is, that they can't put recyclables in a recycle cart. Why do we continue to put diapers and leaves and limbs in a recycle cart?
Well, it cost us $463 in taxpayer money to take it to the landfill today, so there you go. Because people can't recycle, right?
I don't, it seems ridiculous that we're even sitting up here talking about it. Recycle is recycle and trash, and trash is everything else. Do you have any comments, sir?
Throw it out.
It's frustrating.
If you're not sure if it's recyclable or not, throw it in the trash can.
I mean, there's so many people that are doing the right thing by taking the extra effort to do all the recycle because they really want recycling in this city. And remember a year or two ago when we lost recycle for a couple of months, how everybody lost their minds? For real. I mean, I got more calls on that than I think coyotes a couple of years ago. And so we got it back and I thought everything was to be going just fine, but it seems like every week or every two weeks or every month at least, somebody's, there's a load that has to go to trash. And those people who put the recycle in there, now their recycle has gone to the trash. When they had it picked up, they intended it to go to recycling because one of the neighbors down the street messed it all up for everybody. So it's just very frustrating. Any other comments before we vote? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
You gotta do a motion.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 42, Article One, Sections 42 to 24 and 42 to 26 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Tegukay as it relates to recycle waste.
Now we have a motion. Who wants to second? Second by the mayor pro tem. Anybody want to vote now? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? It's unanimous. I think that was a very easy one. Let's go to new business, item six A, which is a resolution for new equipment. This is a resolution authorizing the city to purchase of public safety, public works, and utility equipment in the form of an agreement, an equipment lease purchase agreement not to exceed $263,500. Several items were identified in the budget planning process as capital needs. It was presented at the time that we would wait and consider funding those items in February in order to evaluate our financial position and potential impacts from COVID-19. Council is required to pass a resolution in order to utilize capital lease purchase agreements. These agreements allow us to finance the purchase over a four-year period at very low interest rates, which is what?
1.29%.
1.29%.
Bob Barkin was kind of actually upset about that. He says, "At that low, why didn't you just say zero?"
Right. The items to be purchased under this resolution are replacement radios and vehicles in our public safety departments and our backup power generator for wastewater treatment, Plant Two, in our TCUD department. Are there any questions or comments? Is this general funds?
You'll have about, the majority of it is general fund, but you'll have some that is TCUD.
That's what, TCUD?
Yes, sir, for the backup power generator.
Does it require a rate increase for TCUD?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir.
So there's no increases to the general public for this?
Not related to this, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, I will consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the purchase of public safety, public works, and utility equipment in the form of an equipment lease purchase agreement not to exceed $263,500 at 1.29% APR with Truist Bank.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ron Richard. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Since six B was moved, let's go to city manager's report. This is a record. This is incredibly fast.
And I'm really hoping that-
But we'll wait till council comments to get that time back, I'm sure. I'm not looking at you.
Hopefully those interest rates continue on as we look to finance Catawba Park. Mayor and council, Catawba Park Phase One is where we're now calling everything. There's no point calling it one and two any longer.
It sounds better when you say one and two.
Okay, Phase One and Two is now-
It does. We've been talking like that for 15 years.
It's been advertised for bids. The invitation for bids can be found on our, on our website, Camp Co's website, and South Carolina Business Opportunities, or SKEBO as it's referred to. Bids are due, due back end, April 15th at 2:00 PM. Pre-bid conference will be held on March 11th, and we'll be bringing you the necessary bond ordinance for your first reading at your March 15th meeting. While we're on the sports game, spring sports are trying to get started if the weather will cooperate. This season, we have 1,820 youth sport participants for the spring, and 36 adult teams spread between men's and women's softball and co-ed kickball. So packed house, to say the least. Let's see, let me jump around a little bit here. If you have not registered, if you're planning on getting the vaccine when your tier group has its turn, encourage everybody to go through the Piedmont site, the Piedmont portal, so that you can go ahead and get registered through the VAMs system. Will save you time so that when you're 1A, B, or 1A, or 1C, or two, or three, or whichever group gets called, or whatever group you get moved into, it seems these days, you're already in the VAM system. If you need help, reach out to City Hall. You can also go to the Rock Hill website. On their COVID page, they have put together some great tutorials to help folks do that. You used to have an email, required to have an email, but now the mayor and I learned, what I guess last week, that you can actually do it with a phone number. So if for some reason you're online and don't have an email address, you can use a phone number. Two other things to bring to council's attention. One will be for consideration next month. In conversations with Duke Energy, they have, now are expressing some concerns over the level of the fee that council approved for us to charge, even though they didn't have an issue with it before. They're getting some pushback from the higher-ups at doing the $15 carload. They would prefer we do $4 a head per person instead of a $15 carload.
How about we do both? Maxed out at $15 a carload, $4 a person, up to $15 a carload.
They want us to stick to a per-head count type thing, which-
That way they can't max out.
It really works in our benefit.
What's that?
It works in our benefit doing it on the per-head count versus a per-vehicle, which we tried to explain, but we'll be bringing that to y'all next month. So they seem very okay at that rate, but did not want to do a per-vehicle type thing. So again, just want to give you a heads up on that. And then last, certainly not least, good news, bad news, if, depending on how you want to look at it, with the Heron Harbor Crosswalk, project agreement came forward today from SC DOT late this afternoon, before they put it out for bid, which they are ready to do. We, I am, I have to sign said project agreement, and then they will send us the invoice for our 20% match. They are estimating this project at $60,500. Our match would be $12,100. I need council's authorization to move forward with that so that they can do that project. The project got real expensive when-
I remember, I think we talked $18,000 for having five crosswalks at one time or something.
Yes, sir.
And we were wondering how we were going to get $18,000, and then went to RFATs and they said, "Yeah, I'll give you $36,000."
Right.
And then-
Now they're giving us 48.
Now they're giving us 48, but we have to come up with 20.
And we gotta come up with $12,100, 20% match.
What was the original projection?
We, we had bid, we had bid it out as the rapid flashing beacons and doing it ourselves. Got the letter from Federal Highways that allowed us to do that. But with using the RFATs funds, those, it's either TAP or TEP funds, unfortunately. Susan's not here to correct me. It comes with stipulations because it's federal money, and that required a study. And the study says, "Oh, well, we don't think the flashing beacons will do the trick. You gotta do the in-road surface mount." Price went up. Tim had gotten quotes. I don't know where DOT is getting their project estimation. Maybe there's asphalt, you know, major asphalt work involved with that. I'm just having a hard time coming up with where. They've, they've specced this out at $60,500, but that's what they have specced it out as. So before they will put it out for bid, they have to have a signed project agreement from us, at which point they will turn around and send me an invoice that we will need to send them a check.
I mean, think of all the interest we've earned on that money that we've been sitting in the bank, right? A dollar fifty a month. I'm okay with it. I mean, the only thing worry I have is that when that one gets put in, people down the road wants to say, "We want one just like it," and the other side, and it's, this kind of was supposed to be a test bed to see how everything started.
This one is the test.
It wasn't supposed to be what we're going to do in the whole city, especially at this price, and that's the only thing I worry about. We, we can't afford $60,000 per crosswalk, unless we could take it out of the chief's budget. But we got, we're paying too much for police. Why don't we take it out of their budget? We can probably do that. Just-
We were going to put those in artificial intelligent cameras. We've got a presentation for y'all next month. We were going to charge that to PD, so.
Okay, that's good.
We can throw the crosswalks in there as well.
They charge us a lot already.
At 60K, you have two part-time police officers just directing traffic. I mean, really, come on. That's way safer.
So what was our, what were we originally planning to spend?
So Tim had gotten quotes, and Tim, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they were somewhere in the, for the in-road mount, you were somewhere in that $18,000 range. And he just got two quotes. We sent those to SC DOT when the RFATs funding got applied to this, and not really sure what happened between then. And hey, here's project agreement for $60,500. You gotta pay your share.
Is there a warranty involved with this and the maintenance agreement and all those kinds of stuff?
Any warranties and whatnot will come with it, yes, sir.
I know, what are those?
I don't know what those are. They haven't even put it out for bid yet.
So were we budgeting $18,000 or were we budgeting 20% of $18,000?
Oh, no.
We were thinking it was going to be 20% of $18,000 until the project agreement, Susan forwarded it to me late this afternoon.
So we're talking $12,000.
So about $10,000 difference.
Yeah. What's, big high roll in a city like Tegukay, what's $12,000, right?
Most expensive crosswalk.
I say that in jest, all those people watching at home, because I'll get emails in the morning. "You spend my money like nobody else has ever spent my money." All right, well, we've been this far. We've told everybody we were getting these crosswalks.
Do I have a direction to move forward?
That's true, crosswalk.
Singular.
We were thinking about doing all the crosswalks, like I said, about $18,000. Now we're doing one for 12, but it's going to be an incredible crosswalk.
It's going to be a glorious crosswalk.
It's going to be the most glorious, incredible crosswalk.
Everybody better cross that crosswalk.
Everybody-
We're going to have like a day, just back and forth.
Let's, whatever we do, let's don't do a ribbon cutting.
No, we will not cut the ribbon on that.
I love ribbon cuttings, but this is one that's a little silly. Okay, anybody else got any questions or comments?
Any issues?
It's public safety, okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Got it. And that concludes-
It's only money.
That concludes my report for this evening.
I just want to say something about the shots. Thanks for bringing that up about not having to have an email, because you can call, there's, if you go to the Rock Hill site, if you Google "City of Rock Hill," it comes up to Rock Hill on the Google page, and it says COVID-19 immunizations or COVID-19, something like that. You click on that, and then it's got, like you said, tutorials and everything. It's got how, how to do everything. If you don't have an email, you call that number and they'll walk you through it. What's happening with people now, they're, they're, they have an email address and they're doing it on their phone. And when they, to verify your phone, they have to send you a PIN. And people are having trouble while being on the site to go over to their email at the same time. It says one turns off for the other. They get very frustrated. If you're doing it by phone and you have, and you're getting frustrated by doing it that, when you enter your email, then you gotta get out of your email to do the PIN, to put it back in the email, just call the number and tell them what your problem is and that you have an email address and you would just register by phone for your email address, and it'll be the same thing. If that makes sense. All right, anything to say?
No, thanks. Police and fire saving lives, saving structures. I know last week, fire was able to save a little something back on the peninsula from going to the ground. It's a great job there. Always a pleasure to give you guys the equipment that you need to be successful, what you guys do. Really appreciate your opinions and what you two chiefs bring to the table. So thank you for that. Happy Mardi Gras to any of those people out there. I was in Louisiana last week, had a little bit of fun. Got a little cold there the last couple of days, so not much on the antics today, but Ash Wednesday for you Catholics that are out there, Lent, all that good stuff. But that's all I have.
Did you have a king cake?
I did, and crawfish, and boudin, crackling, you name it.
That's my boy. Okay.
I had a, I was worried about my bag being, getting that $50 charge for being overweight, but they gave it to me instead. Who knew they put you on a scale after eating too much?
Alicia?
I am good.
Oh, my.
Me too. I, I am, I'm good. Oh, yes.
You're gonna, unbelievable, okay.
All right, two things real quick. Well, one of them's going to be real quick. Committees, there are many, many vacancies on committees. For anybody who may be watching, that's a great way to get involved with your city and give back. If you're looking for gateway to a possible seat up here, if you really want to take that step, get some thick skin, but it's a, it's a good gateway to get up here as well. We have several committees that have more vacancies than they do applicants. I know I will try and push this out, maybe through social media personally. I think we probably all should, and definitely the city should do some more. I know we have been, but let's, let's, let's make sure that we have all those vacancies filled. Secondly-
Do you want me to read those out?
What's that?
Do you want me to read out where we've got the vacancies?
Yeah, why don't you?
Sure, go ahead. Okay. Where we really need applications are economic development, TTK Forever, we could use some, and Stormwater Committee, which I've got an idea on maybe if, if the ordinance is getting revamped on how that might can get retooled, since it really isn't a, it's an as-needed kind of thing. I don't know that we should really just continue to put people on that. But we do have some-
Can we roll that into another committee, maybe?
It may be something that either a portion of planning or a portion of council, because it's really just to hear appeals, you know, the way it's set up. So maybe instead of it being, you know, a group that sits around doing nothing, you know, because they, they haven't met in over 10 years. So, yeah, it may be, maybe, maybe, maybe between planning and or- Way to go, chief. Appreciate that. So Boz, Boz seems to be in good shape, but really, Economic Development Committee is probably the one that needs, we need the most apps and could, and could use a few more good apps for TK Forever, for sure.
All right, second thing. I brought a prop. It's a soapbox.
Oh.
I wish to, I wish to clarify something, and Alicia mentioned something earlier too about runoff. I want to clarify one thing real, real fast. Ever since they got ready to start developing game on, which in turn became game off, I made a promise when I ran for council. I knew that was a very sensitive area and that there was a stream that was leading directly from the property into our lake. And I said, "I'm going to keep my eye on this and make sure that they do what they're supposed to do." I want to clarify that never once did I ever endorse the spending of hundreds of thousands of dollars of city money to try and do anything with this. But as I watched, this is the second time since I've lived in Tegukay that I've watched development in our city take somebody's waterfront property away from them, take their dock away. Did, you know, the, the first instance, we were not MS4. This time, we were. I look at the report, I'm pointing over here at my, my computer. I look at the report that we got back from DHEC. That was a really, really fancy, long and drawn-out, multi-page way of saying, "Well, at the end of the day, all that sediment wasn't there until the development started, and the same thing happened when they built Callaway." It wasn't there before, and it was there after. So as I read the report, it mentions, you know, blaming the watershed and, and, you know, the, the changes in the landscape and everything from the development. Well, if DHEC followed all the rules and Tegukay followed all the rules, then there's not enough rules. That's the way I see it. I'm just one person. I know that we're looking at, at future development, although there's not that much left to develop that feeds directly into Lake Wiley. Even in the report from DHEC, she said, "The door is open. Basically, if any municipality wants to set stricter ordinances than the ones that DHEC already has, that they're welcome to do so." And I know we worry about, would that scare off developers or would it not? I don't know. There's a lot of states that have a lot tougher environmental regulations than we do, and they all seem to get developed anyway. This is a very desirable area to build. I don't know what the answer is. I wish I did. I know for several years now, I've been watching this problem occur, and, you know, it, it's there. Did it- Did it start with Walmart? Maybe? I don't know. I mean, I'm a city councilman. I change oil for a living. I'm, I'm, I'm not an environmental scientist. But I know what I know and I know what I saw. And it, it's a shame that it happened. I wish something more could have been done about it. I'm not laying fault at anybody's feet. I don't know whose fault it is. I just know that it happened and it's a damn shame that it did. Lake Wiley, I mean, that's what this city's all about. It's one of our most precious resources. And I don't think we took a good, took good care of it. And when I say we, I don't, I'm not, not saying the city. I don't know whose fault it was. I just know it's there.
I was worried when you brought deodorant soap. I, I agree with everything he says. The people that are suffering here did everything they were supposed to do to, to try to mitigate this, the situation. They kept an eye on it. They kept telling us what was wrong. They took great pictures. And it's kept happening. And we were just like, what, what can we do? We, we got a, what is it called? A hydrologist, hydrologist scientist who came back and said, "Oh, it's not there. It's coming from up here. It's somewhere else." So we spent seven or eight thousand dollars for that guy. If every time somebody came up here and complained about something, we spent seven, eight thousand dollars, we wouldn't have any money left. So we went, we took this thing seriously and then we went to D H E C. We did everything. And still, he's got proof that there's sediment in the lake and his, right in front of his dock. And the dock was completely functional before they started work up there and now it's not. And I'm, I'm at a loss of what to do too. I'm just, I, I don't know what to do. And I know Charlie's worked real hard to, to figure it out. We all have. It's not something we just said, "Leave it alone." We just, we've done everything I can think of to do. If there's any other things we can do, please let us know. But enough on that. So I just want to thank, if I'm, hope I'm not letting the cat out of the bag. I want to thank Charlie and Joey for coming up with a great plan for the Fourth of July. Is that public information yet?
Uh, yes, sir.
Oh, good.
It is now.
It is now? Okay, so for the Fourth of July, because the Fourth of July is on a Sunday this year, we're gonna still have Fourth of July on Sunday, but we can't really do a parade and everything on Sunday because everybody wants to go to church. So we're gonna have our fireworks on Sunday night, the Fourth of July. We're gonna do our parade one day before on a Saturday and start at 10 o'clock for all those guys, old guys that are marching in the heat. It used to be nine o'clock, now it's 10 o'clock, but we'll handle it. We can handle it. Okay, so we're gonna do it on a Saturday morning. And then the, the ski show is gonna be Friday night. Wonderful. And so the thing is, it's all outdoor stuff. If the Lions Club want to do something, that's totally up to them. That's their separate, their thing. If they don't want to do it, they don't have to. But we're just talking about what we're doing on the outside stuff. I think with all the football going on and baseball and everything, that we can do it safely outdoors. And we're not talking about anything indoor. So if you want to start making plans for Fourth of July, just kind of a initial, just kind of tickle a little bit, we're gonna do it just like before with a change. Okay? So that, that was an excellent plan. I was, when we were talking about it that time about how we were gonna do it and they came up with a three-day thing, brilliant. Okay, and I want to say, the people whose house burned down, that couple came over to my house for dinner Saturday night and they are ecstatic about what you guys did. It was, they had some, all the food in their refrigerator, all the steaks had to be eaten. So they said, "Let's go over to the O'Neal's house and cook it." And I'm like, "Hick, yeah." But talking to them, they really are impressed with how fast it got there. They, they got a lot of water damage, which happens in a fire, but the, the house is gonna be able to be moved back into. And, and it's really, y'all guys were over there, what, four minutes or something? So good job. Tell all the firemen they did a great job. Is there anything else before I call for adjournment? Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. We're adjourned.